I have seven o'clock. I call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, community comment for anything not on the agenda? I'm not sure that we have anybody here for items that are not on the agenda. Alright, so moving on to presentations and reports, and it is Employee of the Year Award Night. So I am really excited to announce and congratulate Brian Metzen and Teddy Fahey on their Employee of the Years. You guys all know, we have two Employees of the Year, part-time position and a full-time position. So first up for the part-time position is Teddy. And Teddy has been a tremendous addition to our team. And I just want to read a few things because this is an award where Teddy was nominated by her peers. And in my mind, that makes it that much more of a bigger deal because the folks here really think very highly of you. And this is what they had to say. Teddy has a high-spirited attitude that brings energy to the team. She's always eager to learn and to help find solutions to any problems that arise. Teddy is always willing to help out. Her personality on a daily basis is positive and upbeat. Teddy has a great attitude and work ethic and always is willing to help when needed. Teddy is friendly, funny, and considerate, exhibiting true professionalism with our residents and contractors at the front counter and over the phone. So let's congratulate you and give you your award. So I have a little something for you. Are we doing the photo?
Yep.
Okay. Congratulations. Come on, let's take a picture.
They said it.
Alright, Sam?
Lose the jackets.
Come on in. Okay. Let's push. Thank you so much. There you go. There you go. This works. They're all smiling. Erin, make you a smile. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Alright, up next is Brian, who again, I don't think I've ever seen without a hat off. So it's really good to know what I'm looking for in Target the next time I'm there. Brian, you too have been a really tremendous addition to our team and your colleagues had the following to say about you. Brian always comes to work with a great attitude, making even the toughest situations a little easier to deal with. He is eager to lend a helping hand, even if it adds to an already hectic daily workload. A true team player. Brian never seems to get overwhelmed, is always willing to answer any questions, is understanding and kind. Brian always brings, or Brian is always welcoming and pleasant, helpful when asked questions, and supportive of all staff members. He brings a positive energy to the office on a daily basis. When I was reading this before tonight's meeting, that part about somebody saying that you were kind really struck out to me because I've always found it to be true, and especially in this world that we're living in, I think can never go wrong by going out of your way to be kind. So thank you, Brian. Congratulations.
We don't know if we got that Minnetonka sweatshirt.
Alright, and I have this for you. I'd like for you to open it right here.
Oh, boy.
Better, but maybe. So that's funny because when Brian told his wife that he's got Employee of the Year, his answer was? My own ham.
Yeah.
And ride, ticket to ride the Steepoade J's Parade. I couldn't, and I talked to Christie about the Steepoade J's Parade, but there's your ham. Alright, thank you guys again for everything you do for the city of Carver. We really appreciate it. Alright, thank you. Now you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the evening and watch Truth and Taxation, or you can fuck out. You do you. It's up to you. Thank you, guys.
Congrats, Brian.
Thank you. Congratulations. Lose your coats. Alright, moving on to public hearings, the 2022 fee schedule. So I will open the public hearing and then Ms. Smith.
I hope. So the public hearing tonight is related to the 2022 fee schedule, so the fees that we adopt that are set for the entire year. You'll notice that there are several related to utility connection charges. So a project that we worked on pretty heavily a year ago, two years ago, was setting our long-term plan to set what these fees needed to be. So the fee schedule tonight sets those fees for 2022 in alignment with that plan. So a public hearing is required since it's set for the fee schedule. Fees go into effect January 1. So we play the game a little bit in the permitting department that if you applied before January 1st, you'll be recognized for the 2021 fees. Anything that's received after January 1 is the 2022 fees.
Did that increase any applications?
No. Eh, maybe. Who knows? We've seen a lot from Lennar for the Timber Creek Development, but I think they're just excited to get going. Questions, comments?
Sorry.
No, it's good.
Questions, comments anymore?
I have one question. We were talking about the Carver Station parking lot reservation fee. I can't recall what it was because I thought we had lowered it, but there's nothing to compare because we didn't have it last year. So do you have any?
Yeah, we lowered it to the amount that the council suggested. I think it was, I don't have, is it $50?
It says 125 a day on here still.
Oh, I thought the comment was just for the profit organizations.
Oh, yes, it's.
The fee remained the same, and it might be a little confusing, but I wanted to talk just a little bit about the other fees. Erin talked about the connection fees, yes.
Is this, are you moving on from the Carver Station one? I'm not quite finished with that one.
We can finish that one. If you look at the Carver Station, what was discussed at the work session, I think, was clarifying who that fee applied to.
Okay, and so that's why it says, okay, in the notes, we have for-profit organizations.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll take care of that question. Thank you.
Yes. So just the remaining fees, Erin had talked about the connection fees relative to the developments. The other fees that the staff looks at on an annual basis are all the other fees. And at the November 15th City Council Work Session, we went over those fees that were being proposed to be changes. And they included adding work without building permit fee and clarifying the permit cancellation fees. We changed some cemetery fees for location of grave monument site and transfer of grave site. Changed the assessment certification fee, added a rental fee for Carver Station's parking lot, and then the comment to clarify who that fee pertained to. The utility rates based on the long-term plan, and changed the water meter charges to reflect actual costs. And those fees actually went down a little bit compared to what was on the proposed schedule at the November Work Session just because the cost came in a little bit less than that. And the other changes, I think, that were mentioned at the Work Session were the two with the Carver Station. And then the other one was clarifying what we meant by work without a permit for the building permit fee. So the fee schedule that is in the council packet is what is being presented tonight. And we would ask after the public hearing is closed, if you have any further questions, the two things that we would be asking for tonight is a motion to adopt ordinance 07-2021, amending those certain fees as presented here. And then we also would ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 149-21, authorizing the summary publication of that particular ordinance.
Alright, are there any public comments? After all, public comments are received, if any, the public hearing will be closed and no further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. So I don't see anyone here from the public, so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, council, any questions? Hearing none. I would entertain the motions.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 07-2021, amending certain fees charged by the city.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 149-21, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 07-2021.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, motion passes. Thank you. Let's see, we wanted to add.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I missed my opportunity during the agenda adoption, but if you could consider, if there's a better process way to do this, city attorney, let me know. But if the council could consider amending the agenda to add item 8.4, PTO carryover, and I'll discuss that as a business item.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, or the?
Just the regular agenda.
Just regular agenda with the approval of, with the addition of 8.4, the carryover of the PTO.
Alright, so we have amended a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright. Now we're on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry. Thank you.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, item 8.1, the 2022 levy certification and budget adoption. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if we could get my screen up on the TV there. Thank you. So we have two motions for, excuse me, two resolutions for consideration by the city council tonight. One, Resolution 150-21, adopting the, or certifying the 2022 property tax levy. And then the second motion is 151-21, approving the 2022 budget, which are kind of connected actions. So the city kicked off its 22 budget process in May, and we continued it through the summer and fall, held a number of work sessions with council and staff. At the December 6th meeting, the council held the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing to solicit comments on our proposed budget, which was based on the preliminary levy that the council adopted in September. At the December 6th meeting, the council did receive testimony from two property owners regarding the proposed levy and budget. The primary budget and tax levy drivers for 2022 consist of $325,000 in new debt service related to the Jonathan Carver Parkway Improvement Project, $100,000 in additional street maintenance funding connected with the pavement management plan, and finally approximately $60,000 in prorated costs to fund a new finance director position that was noted in the city's strategic plan. So in your packet, you'll see kind of the summary versions of the levy. So we have the general levy, which is consistent with what you've seen in the past, debt service levy. But I will note the street maintenance levy is kind of a new addition. We've traditionally budgeted, or the city's traditionally budgeted, street maintenance within the public services or public works department budget in the general fund. And so this year, we're separating that out to be a little bit more transparent and open about where the street maintenance funds are going and to make sure that there's some consistency in putting those, setting those funds aside and then using them specifically for street maintenance projects. And so the street maintenance levy that you see here would be dedicated towards a project in Eagle Ridge, which the city council will be taking a look at at your first meeting in January. So that's the Debbie Lane, Skyview Lane kind of area on the east side of the community. And then you can see here the corresponding revenues and expenditures for the general fund, debt service fund, and all of our corresponding enterprise funds. Quite an extensive list of attachments, so all the line item budgets are contained within your packet as well as a summary of the Truth and Taxation presentation that was delivered to the council and residents at your last meeting along with the resolutions to adopt the final budget and tax levy. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Glenn, were you about to make a motion? Actually, I thought I saw you. Doing what?
Alright, I guess I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 150-21, certifying the 2022 property tax levy in the amount of $3,604,550.
Alright, we've got a motion by Councilmember Henry. Thank you.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 151-21, approving the 2022 budget.
Alright, we've got a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to 8.2, the Police Services Agreement with the Carver County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the council's annual opportunity to review the contract for police services with the Carver County Sheriff's Office. The city currently funds two full-time equivalent positions along with a squad vehicle as are part of our overall agreement for services. Something that we really want to highlight this year that we've probably undercommunicated in the past, or I've undercommunicated in the past, is what it really means to fund a full-time equivalent position. Specifically, you're not funding a specific person, even though that we have a dedicated deputy both during the day and the evening, but you're funding everything that goes along with a full-time position. And so when I say that, that means that you get the police-related duties, so patrol, reports, investigations, and so on. But in order to fund that equivalent position, as you would with any of the other full-time positions that the city has, you're also funding training, vacation, sick time, holiday pay, and so on. And so the key to that is to ensure that when the city is contracting for that service, that we're paying for the kind of the full portion of that deputy and that the county or other cities throughout the county aren't subsidizing that part of that position. There are two new provisions that were suggested by the city attorney, which were added and accepted by the sheriff's office related to emergency assistance and enforcement matters. So I'm happy to defer to the city attorney if he wants to, or if he has, if there's any questions related to those pieces in the agreement. As far as the finance piece goes, a modest increase. We are expecting the costs to go up significantly in 2023 just based on the collective bargaining agreement that the county has signed with its deputies. But from going from '21 to '22, as you can see, just over a thousand-dollar increase in your packet, you'll find a contract for police services, which you'll see the redlined areas for the new pieces. And then something that's kind of functioned as an internal document that we're sharing with the council is the Sheriff's Office Work Plan. And so in that document, a lot of the things that we talk about kind of on a consistent and annual are kind of based on when the need arises, but kind of areas of significance within the community. So talking about certain areas to patrol as far as our main collectors' relationship with the schools. One of the pieces that has been in there for several years is really bearing down on enforcing open containers in the downtown and trying to avoid situations where that's occurring just because we have found that it's led to, you know, garbage left in the streets or public urination, that type of thing. So it's something that the sheriff's office has really done a good job of helping us out with. So if there are areas in there that you think are missing, happy to take that feedback to and amend that plan. It's not something you need to adopt, but add it as a frame of reference for the services that the sheriff's office is providing to the city. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So the work plan, that's agreed to between the city and the sheriff's office?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate you including that document. I'm not sure I've seen that before. And I really like the redlined areas, especially around the ATVs, as well as winter parking since we've had some complaints with a couple of recent storms. So thank you for that because that's really helpful to understand, you know, really where those services are targeted, and it looks really appropriate to me. Thank you.
The one thing that I saw on the work plan, and it's page, I think, 14 out of 15 in the attached document, was that it said it works with, work with the management team of Carver Crossing to provide and maintain a safe and secure housing environment by enforcing all applicable laws and statutes. My question for that is, should we add Bluff Creek on there too? And that it's another apartment building in our community?
I'm just trying to find.
It's the one, two, third bullet.
Oh.
On page 14.
Sure.
That's my only thought or feedback. There we are. Sorry.
Okay, I actually have a question about that one, but it's on the opposite. Is it, we're calling that out separately from every other resident that lives in Carver. So I'm just curious as to why we would want to say, okay, we were going to call out that over other?
You know, and, yes, I thought either we add Bluff Creek on or, because, you know, like, it's a fine line. I know that Katie does have good relationships with the management up there, but where do we draw the line? The apartment houses in the old school building, the apartment houses across the street? I don't think it's any less part of her daily job, but yeah, I thought the same thing. Like, either we add in at least Bluff Creek or?
Right, I think it, and even maybe, do we take out the Carver Crossing? And, or the man, I don't know. I think it's important for everyone. I think it's a little bit strange to call out specifically two of our workforce housing units, but not call out the, you know, the apartments here in the corner or something like that. Not that I don't think it's a good idea, because of course we want them to have the management, you know, good relations with the management teams there, but it seems a little specific to me, me calling out those two on their own.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, Councilmember Mock, Council, the, it's a very good point. I think that was one of the pieces that was added shortly thereafter when Carver Crossing was approved. And it's just, it was good to have another set of eyes on this. It's one of those where it just continued to be in there. So could certainly remove it because I think the points that you're making related to just separating it from the rest of the neighborhood is something different and unique is, that feedback is well taken. So we can remove, we can remove that if the council.
I think I would prefer it was removed. I don't, if the rest of the council would be okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Alright.
I have one other question. Sorry, and I gotta find it again. Oh, under the, under the, I would be page, actual page 13. It says, establish a working relationship with community young people. That's a great thought, but I don't see an action. There's, I'm not sure what that means.
So I, I couldn't define that for you this evening, but I think it's a point, another point well taken. When Katie gets back into the office, we can talk about that. And probably a good opportunity for, maybe even at a work session, for Katie just to kind of walk through this work plan and then give the council an opportunity to provide that level of feedback and then provide her an opportunity to share what her specific plans might be to engage young people in the community.
That sounds good. I wanted to stay in there. I just didn't, didn't know what, what the expectation was, but I think that'll help. That's a good idea.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to enter into a contract for police services with Carver County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes. Alright, item 8.3, the Sixth Street West Improvement Project. Authorization of the plans and specifications. Mr. Lamis.
Yep, you bet. Well, as you noted here, I'm here seeking your authorization to proceed with plans and specifications in accordance with the memo here, and I'm going to walk you through the presentation you've seen and answer a few of the questions that came up at that last discussion.
I was just, all of a sudden, I couldn't feel my phone, and I realized you already has it.
Crisis burden? Okay.
Well, at least it wasn't in your hand, you know? Everybody's had that moment. Alright, so we'll cover background and goals, status and update, cost and funding again, and then some next steps. So some of this is review for you, so I'll try and keep it moving. But as we talked before, Sixth Street is going to be, and currently is really, your gateway to downtown. It's going to be even more prominent here with the completion of JCP. That's, Sixth Street is now your main intersection to get into the town. And so it's, it's going to be the future gateway. So some of the issues, pavement rehab is a huge priority for the corridor. I don't need to get into the details on that, but there's been a lot of drainage issues that we're trying to attack. Pedestrian and bicycle improvements are definitely needed. It's, it has a trail, what we call it a walk, but it's, it's, it does have what was intended to be a paved trail. But there's a lot of opportunities to make it a little bit more bike-friendly. Improve lighting and safety. It's quite dark at night. Traffic calming is a goal, and visual quality. Of course, you want the main corridor coming into town to look nice. So here is the layout that you would be seeking to construct with this project. So you've probably seen this in the PDF, so I won't go through it right now, but it's going to include just some walls and brand-new pavement and some new striping. So it, it's a dramatic change to the corridor with just a few minor elements. We're not getting into major reconstruction. We're just getting into the new pavement and reconstructing many of the things you have out there today. So we are adding a few elements for lighting and such, but for the most part, it is what it is today. And so it is a moderately low-cost improvement for the length of this corridor. Normally, the numbers would get much larger on this if you're getting into reconstructions and fully rebuilding the roadways. So what are we doing for the typical section? Some of the goals that we're trying to address here are the pedestrian bicycle improvements, lighting for safety and security, and traffic calming. So that's, it's the exact same curb section, but we are reconfiguring it to a narrower lane typical section. That's going to be done just with striping and adding bike shoulders. And then we are trying to get a full eight-foot. trying to get a full eight foot, what we're going to call it a bituminous walk, cause it's not technically a trail, but it'll function a little bit more like a trail, cause some of your segments on the current trail get down to five feet and are quite narrow. So it'll be a little bit closer to a trail system, but still not technically there. So and then of course you see the lighting on either side. So what would that actually look like? Lywood uh Parkway pedestrian crossing. We would be adding bump outs in this location here, uh defined pedestrian crossing. That's really intended to be a very visual impact as you drive down the corridor. This is where a fair amount of folks are going to be crossing the street and we're trying to make it look as such. It's trying to be, trying to be different from the rest of the roadway. Um, and uh, I, council member McKnight here, you asked a little bit about those bump outs and, and we do have a plan for that.
Ooh, good.
It's a, I will say it'll be unique to Carver. It's a custom designed for this specific bump out. We think we can do it and still maintain some of the ADA standards uh to get that bump out, so it's more traversable.
Custom designed?
Custom designed, just for the, this comment.
McKnight bump out. Yep, yep.
I will say I can put a, a detail together for this one and
There you go.
We'll circulate it and say that, that's uh
That was me.
Member McKnight.
Awesome.
Yep. So uh, this would be your first uh, first transition uh down to Sixth Street. And then of course, uh, in the middle of the roadway, you're going to see uh brand new walls, cause those are aging walls. Uh, the block starts to deteriorate, especially the block that uh was created at that time. Uh, they've made some improvements to it, but at this point here, it's, it's aging and it's going to be subject to failure. So we, we'd be uh replacing the walls. All of that uh curb is staying in place. So what you're really seeing is a brand new pavement and striping and then a new trail. And so that's really the major change. And then an addition of lighting and some, potentially some uh dynamic speed signs along the corridor to keep speeds where they're uh intended to be. So down at Sixth Street, there'll be a couple uh elements down here that we talked about at the last meeting. Explain what we're doing. Notice the overhead lines are ideally going to disappear, go underground. Again, that ties to some of the aesthetics uh in the area. Um, the uh T intersection would be converted to uh a very, very tight curve. It, with uh ultimately a driveway uh connection. And so I, I know, council member Mac, you had a number of questions about that. Should we stay with the T? And uh, you know, it's a, it's a fair question. It's been operating that way for years. And so the, the recommendation at this point is to, to switch it over to the, the, the very tight curb with some added signage for speed uh management. Uh, the issue is we're going to try and design it to what people are driving it as, which is a slow curve. And so there, with stop sign or not, they're, they're coming through there and they're rolling through it. And so we're trying to make it a little bit more intuitive to what you actually have going on there. So you, you see the arrow up there is going to be a very, very large arrow indicating curb ahead. We're going to see some uh, uh speed warning, uh, advisory signs coming up to it. Fifteen miles per hour perhaps uh for, for the recommended speed. It's not a speed limit. It's a recommended speed to traverse the corner. And then we're going to have a very, very distinct uh pedestrian crossing that you can see uh as you're coming around the corner to try and push people to this one location to cross, as opposed to what they're doing today, which tends to be everywhere. They go across in both directions and we're trying to get it so that there really only makes, makes sense to go in one direction.
Dan, I've come to peace with this, with this term. So but the pedestrian signs is actually my biggest um sticking point, because I think it's really important that people realize that that change in stop to no stop, right? But there is, has been a traffic control.
Yes.
Traffic control change there, so that they realize that pedestrians as well as drivers know to pay a little more attention, at least initially.
Yes. Okay. So we will, we'll probably go to the, above the minimum standard for the pedestrian signage. There is a, a, a traffic control change, a sign ahead that, that uh can be placed out here with the fact that you're doing just that, you're changing what people are used to. And uh, so that, that might be a temporary uh sign that gets put out there. Otherwise, we would be going above and beyond with uh pedestrian crossing ahead, speed advisory sign. There'd be a lot of signs coming up to this. The big arrow would be the big cue that hey, um, take a right, go slow. So um, that's uh the Sixth Street and Broadway intersection. So current cost estimates and scope reviews. So you're talking pavement rehab. The pavement would be new. It'd be reclaimed, completely ground up, and they'd be pulled up and put brand new pavement out there. That's a long-term repair. So it's, it's much better than the, some of the mill and overlays and spot repairs we were talking about before. So you'll get a long lifespan out of, out of that. Curb repair and modifications would be spot locations along the corridor. We'd have to rip up curb uh in certain lo, in certain spots that is cracked or failed, or it's necessary for any storm sewer repair. Uh, that'd be doing, that'd be done. Uh, drainage elements, we're trying to get at that winter icing and storm event flooding, couple of issues going on there. Water trickling out of the, the hillside here. I think Glenn, you, you might know the exact spring location, but I, I, I know.
I might.
I, I know it's coming out of the hill and I know it's, it's water that doesn't stop in the wintertime and we know we got to capture it. So for us, it's getting it in a, in a pipe and bringing it in the storm sewer. Pedestrian facilities and walks, I really think there'll be some dramatic improvements in, in that area. And uh, I, I think it'll, it'll very much change the look and feel of the corridor. Then a lighting and electrical, of course, or slight time, uh, or nighttime safety and uh, um, security uh for nighttime walks and pedestrian repla, or water main replacement, uh preservation of the water system, because we are taking off pavement uh over uh old ductile iron pipe. Uh, of course, the age of that was reviewed. And if it's getting to the end of its life cycle and is subject to potential repairs in the future, you never want to take out pavement and then leave the water main in place to have it break later and then rip it all up again. So that's, that's why that uh is, has been added since we talked originally about this project. And it is a, you know, a decent portion of it. So uh, the water main replacement would take the last section of ductile iron. I believe that's some of the original pipe that's been put in here. Most of the pipe in the city is PVC, which does not rust and corrode. So there's some advantages on that. Total cost that we are budgeting at this point is $2.6 million. Remember, this is a budget. So I'm setting a number that we think that we would fall underneath. Um, we are dancing around against some inflation challenges to protect what's going to be happening over the coming months, but we are only three months away from bidding this. So thankfully, I don't have to try and predict where it's going to have to be next year. I think within three months, we have, we have a decent number here to, to say we've got a, a solid budget uh pending the final design estimates. They'll be coming out in the coming months. So how this be funded? It would be through the LRIP application, which is $1.25 million. The state would write uh the city a check or transfer the money through your state aid account. So that's how that works. Once it's set up, uh, you will, would be uh effectively wired the, the funding upon eligibility confirmation from uh through your MSA system. Uh, the reason with, that, that was a county sponsored effort originally is because you didn't have an MSA account, so they couldn't give you the money. They had to give the county the money and then the county had to give you the money. So in this case, because you're MSA now, we can short circuit that and you can proceed uh to uh request the uh funding directly and they'll, they'll put it into your MSA account. Roadway construction utility bonds, this was uh JCP, no, no new bonding. We are tracking that against other projects. Uh contingencies remaining. Remember, a lot of this was planned because of a single bond sale effort to try and capture some of these upcoming costs that were uh potentially going to be incurred. So it was, going back to earlier presentations, much of this was uh programmed. Then there's the water fund. That was for the water main. That's just the direct uh elements associated with water main replacement for the ductile. And then uh special capital fund is a potential balance uh point that if, if we do reach close to this budget amount, I wanted to make sure that there is a plan to, to cover the additional expenses. We're hopeful that it's not necessary, but uh we feel it's appropriate to, to budget accordingly for, you know, what could, could occur. So total funding plan and program is 2.6. So what we are seeking tonight is your authorization to produce plans and specifications uh for a March to April bid. Looking for construction to begin in, in May, uh complete, well, we'll say final in October, but we are planning the entire contract around September 1st. So ideally, we would have this thing uh in good shape, uh nice, looking nice by September 1st. And then we'd still have some probably closeout work, punchless things. Who knows on light poles, the lead time can be substantial. That might occur after, but we're looking for substantial completion by September 1st. And then a final would possibly be into the fall. So that would be it. So any questions for me?
Any questions?
Um, when we talked last time, if we, actually, can you pull the presentation back up and go to the cross view with the widths of the lanes? Yes. So the last time we were talking, um, I know, Dan, you said that the 10-6 was a little bit narrow or more narrow than we would normally go. Um, I was just doing, and I was doing some quick math here on a, like a 2020 Silverado pickup truck, that it's about 6.8 feet wide. So that, I mean, that's leaving us not a lot of room on each side. Um, is 10-6 a lot more narrow than we would normally have a road?
It's six inches narrower than what you'd, you would probably see uh, I don't, in many roads nowadays. 12 is the norm. Most, most of the cases, when you see the highway striped, it's 12. Um, a lot of highways, because 12 was seen as almost overly, perhaps overly generous as far as what you really needed to, to uh carry truck traffic. 11 foot has been a very common standard. For example, we put 11 foot lanes on Highway 5 through this, uh, through the city of Waconia. So if you drive through uh downtown, or the uh downtown area on Highway 5, those are going to be 11 foot lanes. And that's a, you know, 50 mile an hour highway. So 11 foot is, is pretty uh commonplace now. 10-6 is, I would say, reserved more to, you know, lower speed collectors, uh, local routes. And I would say you're not going to see it on too many highways. Reason why you don't see it very often is because that's a bit much for a highway, but most local roads don't have the striping uh on it, the way we're doing it right here. So most of the time, you don't have 10-6 even striped, because you've got a 32 foot road with no striping on it. So we're, we're kind of combining some highway elements into a local roadway. And we're running with 10-6 because we, you know, feel will address the calming goals and allow for bike lanes.
Okay. And so is it possible to, and this is just for discussion sake, to, to make the bike lanes narrower, or are they at like a minimum standard right now?
Unfortunately, in order to actually, actually call it technically a bike lane, it's, it's uh 5-6. That is the minimum. Um, the, the thought being though, is that that is, if it's not utilized by a biker at that time, that is really going to act as a shoulder, a striped shoulder. And so really what you're, what you have is a 10 foot 6 lane with a five and a half foot striped shoulder. So that's a pretty wide, wide area for, to drive. But when you see a biker, it should, it should really push the person to focus on the two lane lines, get dead smack in the middle. Biker should be dead smack in the middle of their, their bike lane. And that functionally works uh a, among state aid standards.
Okay.
And that's what we have to focus on here.
So 5-6 is a state aid standard that we have to follow.
And 10-6 is still state aid. Uh, there, that's
No, no, 5-6. So for the bike lane.
Yep. Uh, 5-6 is stated, yes.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll note that 10-6 is also state aid compliant. They're both state aid compliant widths.
Right. Are they the, is 5-6 the state aid compliant minimum?
Minimum. It is for the bike lane.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, on the lane, I think 10, 10-6, there's some different widths than the state aid minimums uh for that. I, I, there might even be a, a circumstance where we can go narrower, but 10-6 is about the minimum I would typically use.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
No, I just have a comment. I, I really look at that T intersection different now too. Um, and I, I like the concept of it making, this design make it a more understandable. I think that's kind of what we struggle with, is that, that those who drive on it all the time versus when, if you're newer to the area. Um, I think this concept makes it a more understandable intersection.
Okay. Good.
Agreed. Yeah. I think this is going to be a really nice thoroughfare into downtown from JCP. Um, I think that the bike lanes are a nice addition. I think, well, it might seem like the lanes are a little bit narrow on paper. It's that calming technique. And if that's what it takes to keep people from zooming up and down Sixth Street, then so be it.
Yes.
Have some faith.
I have hope.
With that, unless anyone has any other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I just have a couple of questions. Um, regarding the drainage, that's all going to be covered with um the springs. That's my major concern, because that's been eating up that street and with compactions um from heavy trucks going up and down there and the water. It's caused considerable damage.
Yes, we
Just make sure that the drain, the drain pipes are big enough, won't we?
Yep. We're going to put in a large Toronto pipe behind the back curb to capture that water. And yes, it'll be a little storm sewer system.
It's my only concern. Thank you.
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the Sixth Street Improvement Project. Motion by council, excuse me, council member McKnight?
I'll second. And a second by council member Sarah. Need further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, all right. That brings us to eight point four. What are we calling that? The PTO rollover?
PTO carryover. Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the city has a, a provision in its employee handbook related to PTO carryover uh to limit the city's exposure to PTO payout. So once PTO is earned, when an employee resigns or, or leaves, retires, et cetera, from the city, uh, they are paid out that PTO at their current wage. And so uh, the ci, cities and the city of Carver specifically has a uh provision within its policy to limit the amount of carryover so that that amount isn't carried over from one year to the other, kind of working as frankly, an annuity. Also, we want to um make sure that employees are utilizing that as a benefit and getting enough time away from work to promote work-life balance. Um, as it pertains to why we're discussing this tonight is um there, we have a couple of situations where uh we've asked folks not to take PTO just based on our staffing situations with leaves, et cetera. And so in order to be consistent with our entire team, uh, I'd ask the council to consider extending the PTO carryover by uh 90 days into 2022 um to allow folks to catch up. And then we'd also share with our department has asking folks not to get behind um into 2022 um so we're not in this position again. But again, we feel like there's some unique circumstances that we wanted to cover at all. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
No.
Good idea.
Yes.
I, I can make a motion to extend the PTO carryover by 90 days into 2022.
Got a motion by council member Mac?
I'll second.
A second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Brent, do you have any city manager communications?
Yeah, uh, just one. I just wanted to thank uh Erin and Chad and Vicky and um really specifically Kathy for all the work on the 2022 budget. It's a lot of helping hands and drafts and redrafts and discussions uh that kind of build to what I end up presenting. But there are a lot of folks behind the scenes that are doing a lot of that work. And so I just wanted to recognize them and thank them.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you all for all your work on that.
Yeah.
Joy, council updates?
Sure. So um, from a Southwest Transit perspective, um, I just have two things. So uh Len Simich, the CEO of Southwest Transit, has announced he's retiring. Um, so the commission and staff are in the process of recruiting a suitable replacement for him. That transition will be taking place in 22 sometime. Um, I think that's to be negotiated. And then um, just some stats. So while overall ridership is down 34% from, in 2021 from 2020 levels, so even down from the pandemic year, um, Southwest Prime Ridership has been up almost 9% this year compared to last year. So that really is the growing part of Southwest Transit. It's the express ridership, right? The rides to the, to the U, to downtown that are really um down. Um, they have made up some ground with some of the events that they've been doing, like to Twins games, to Vikings games, to State Fair, da, 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 da. Um, but really the prime ridership is one that they're really trying to focus on additional areas to grow that service, because it is becoming much more popular. That's all I have to share.
Thank you. I don't have any updates today. Uh, Christine?
Yes. We had our HPC meeting last week. Uh, we had a couple of applications come in. Um, one was approved and then one was recommended for denial with um letting the homeowners know what is in our, our standards and uh what they can take a look at to become compliant with that. So uh, we had that. And then I wanted to mention um the Soggy Bottom. So the Carver Lions will be hosting our Soggy Bottom fundraiser again this year in person. Um, we're going back to that. Yay. Um, so that'll be Saturday, January 29th at Riverside Park. From 11 to 2 is our 13th annual. Um, I, we have selected two recipients. Uh, one I have not connected with, so I'm not going to say um who those are at this point, but more information will be coming out soon on that. That's all I have. Glenn?
Uh, we had a planning commission meeting and we went over next
We had a planning commission meeting and we went over next steps, daycare, which is going to be located near Quick Trip. So we're pretty excited about that. That was passed unanimously. Other than that, I can't think anything else I have going on.
All right, let's see. We had a Carver County mayor's meeting on December tenth. That's where, as the name implies, all the mayors in Carver County get together. And I think I've shared with the group before that it's one part support group and the other part ideation. Well, have you done this and kind of learning from each other's experiences? And then the only other thing I have is this is our last meeting of twenty twenty one. Wishing everybody a happy holidays. Staff and everyone, thank you so much for all of your hard work. It has been a lift this year, but I hope everybody has a great holiday and some time to relax. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McKnight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.